Okay, this is the city council meeting for Tuesday, March first, two thousand and twenty-two. It's six o'clock. This meeting will be conducted via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one M R S A, section four oh three B two D and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted August third, two thousand and twenty-one. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight nine seven seven three eight one five zero one one and password nine three one five one four, or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the city of Sanford website at W W W dot Sanford Maine dot org under email city department, city council. The pledge of allegiance will be led by councillor Hanselman this evening, as well as the moment of silence. If everyone else could mute their computers, that would be appreciated. Councillor Hanselman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
I'm in the city council meeting right now.
With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, look to you, bye.
A moment of silence, please. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hanselman. Next item on the agenda is the roll call. Councillor Brink is absent with notice. Councillor Martel, has he signed on yet? He is absent without notice.
He just texted me to say he's having some trouble getting on.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you. So he will be along then. Councillor Hanselman.
Present.
Councillor Stackpole.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
And I am Anne-Marie Mistracchio, Mayor of the city of Sanford. We're joined this evening by Stephen Buck, the city manager, and Larissa Ricketts, the manager's executive assistant. Minutes, twenty-two dash nine four dash zero one. Order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on Thursday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I will ask for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by councillor Stackpole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Hurley. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Councillor Martel, it was absent for that meeting. Is he on yet? He is not. So councillor Hanselman.
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also, yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-two dash nine two dash zero one. Order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by councillor Stackpole. Is there a second?
A second now.
Second by councillor Hanselman. Any discussion? I'll call the roll. Councillor Martel, are you on yet? I do not see him. Councillor Hanselman.
He just showed up.
Okay, well, we'll just keep going. Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Councillor Martel, these are the, we're voting to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I had a motion and a second, and you, I'm calling the roll. Are you in approval of those minutes? It's not the executive session, it's the regular city council meeting that you were there for. I don't think he can hear me. Okay, well, we'll just skip along. That was unanimous. I will not count councillor Martel as present for that vote then. Twenty-two dash nine three dash zero one. Order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is the one that councillor Martel was not present for. I will, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by councillor Stackpole. Is there a second?
A second now.
Second by councillor Hanselman. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Councillor Martel will, I'll just count him as an abstention because he was not present. Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also, yes, that is four in favor with one abstention. Mayor's report, city council subcommittee reports. I'm going to begin. I have a short report. The municipal operations and property subcommittee met last week and discussed a number of items that are not reflected on this evening's agenda. The first was a consideration of instituting permanent weight restrictions on certain roads in order to protect taxpayers' investments. It was decided that the city manager will work with D P W to compile a list of roads that would benefit from these restrictions and still accommodate the needs of businesses in these areas. This will be brought back to the subcommittee for further review before it's brought to the council. The Department of Public Works also reviewed the fleet management and acquisition process. We received an update on the renumbering and renaming of Sherburne Street in Sanford. An informational pamphlet has been created to aid residents in this process, and a public Zoom meeting will be held next Tuesday, March eighth, at six P M. Residents will have the opportunity to ask questions and participate in the renaming process. Tanguay Street has been mentioned as a possibility. The special assessment district for the Midtown Mall was discussed, as well as a method for sharing the cost of maintenance and capital improvements between the city and the two primary property owners benefiting from the parking lot. This will come before the council in the near future and will be subject to the public hearing process. The subcommittee reviewed a proposed grant funding request of fifty thousand dollars from the governor's Office of Policy Innovation and Community Resiliency Partnership. The thought was that this grant would add to the Amelda Fund and provide more money to help low-income homeowners, improve the energy efficiency of their homes. I expect this will come forward to the full city council for further review and public comment in the near future. A decision was made to allow Memorial Day, July fourth, and Holly Days parades and associated events to proceed as they have in the past. However, keep in mind that we will all need to be flexible should future CDC recommendations warrant changes or restrictions. And finally, the first meeting of the budget committee will be held this Thursday, March third, at six P M. This meeting will be virtual, and information for viewing is provided on the city's website. And that's all I have for that. I know that there are some other subcommittee reports. Councillor Hanselman?
Yes, thank you. The Public Safety Subcommittee met on the twenty-second. The police update included a report from Lieutenant Chad Allen on the LexisNexis online reporting, which has been an ongoing project for quite some time now. So I was really excited to hear that that's coming close to fruition. It'll be online reporting for things like misdemeanors and crimes without suspects that can be reported through an app on your phone or a desktop computer. It will have a user-friendly interface, they're promising us, and I have data and agree it is user-friendly. And the link will be available through different vehicles online, through the website. Dispatch hopefully can share the link with folks that might be calling in and have an event that would be appropriate to report online. So it's a great, hopefully, time and staff-saving effort that we'll be rolling out here soon. Other news was that Lacey Bailey is the new options clinician in the mental health unit with the police department, and her position is a partnership between the Sanford Police Department, Department of Public Safety, and Sweetser with funding coming from the Department of Public Safety, which is exciting. Other P D news included recent donation from the Sanford Rotary, so thanks to the Sanford Rotary for that. The police department helped for the first time in the annual point-in-time count, which essentially helps determine how many of our community members are currently unhoused or in a unstable housing situation. There were twenty-two surveys collected, which felt like a successful event here in Sanford, and some good information and data was collected. D C Small will be working on, and it sounds like we'll probably hear more about, a potential volunteers and police service program, which sounds like a great opportunity for community members to be involved in specific aspects of the police department that would be appropriate. And there was a brief discussion from the chief on the winter parking bans and the impacts of folks parking in our city municipal lots when street parking isn't allowed, and some of the issues that causes with plowing of those city lots. So that will be further discussion, I believe, with the city manager. Other items were that the conversation from Matt Hill and the Public Works on plowing priorities and the status of the new sidewalk plow. And Matt indicated that the sidewalk plows are functioning really well. They are narrower units than we had in the past, so they're doing a good job getting through tighter spots. And in conventional storms, which I think was the key kind of theme that we heard at last Tuesday's meeting, conventional storms, you know, things are going really well with both sidewalk plowing and plowing in general, and Matt's seen a faster response time on the sidewalks. The issue that we've had this winter season is related to ice, and so ice has been really challenging. We've had flooding. We've had storms that have kind of fallen on top of each other, which have caused issues. So the D P W has done magnesium chloride treatments and been, you know, out there doing the best they can, but it certainly has been a challenge. In terms of talking about, you know, contracting outside what clearing, that was a brief discussion, and it would cost about two-thirds more, was the note I had, if we were to subcontract sidewalk clearing out to another agency. And then another one was downtown hauling and clearing of snow, and a lot of challenges exist, it sounds like, right now in terms of the ability to contract out. There's limited availability for contractors that are interested in hauling snow for us. And in terms of our staff and our equipment, it is tough depending on the type of nature of the storm to switch out equipment and staff. So again, the theme was that in conventional storms, where we get a couple feet of nice soft snow, things can go well, but as soon as that's followed with rain, ice, and whatnot, things become really challenging. From there, we also discussed, and actually, we moved forward, the hydrant plumbing contract, which was discussed later tonight. And then two more quick things. One, Grammar Road and Grammar Street intersection was discussed. There is concerns from multiple parties related to this intersection and the high rate of speed and some of the crashes on that particular road. So that data was reviewed, and there was agreement that enforcement seems to be a primary concern in that area, and that that could also be, you know, a way to combat the issue. It would be more traffic enforcement. So that seems to be something we need to talk more about in the future. And the last thing was that we do have a COVID update. I know the city manager is discussing it tonight. I did want to share that I thought was interesting. Ian Howseal is moving forward. We're trying to get Sanford to be, to participate in the wastewater detection studies here in the state of Maine, so I just thought that was interesting in addition to the regular COVID information. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanselman. I don't think there are any other councillor subcommittee reports, because I think those were pretty much the only ones that met that had something to report. I don't see any hands up. Okay, so we are going on to the city manager's report. Steve?
Thank you. So I've just put the report up on the screen and sent this out earlier. The first element I'd like to report out to is cable TV Comcast construction, or their buildout. And then on February seventeenth, with Brian Christensen from Comcast, receive an update on the construction and the timeline of the pending buildout here in Sanford. It was noted that the buildout is significantly behind schedule. Talking with Mr. Christensen, he expressed and relayed a timetable of the applications for poll attachments to Consolidated Communications. This was a known concern that we expressed when we first started negotiations with Comcast about the timetable, was the difficulty that we had seen as a city obtaining poll attachment agreements with Consolidated Communications. Pursuant to the Maine P U C, chapter eight eighty, section two, and I won't get into all the details on that because there's a lot of moving parts as to what the timeline determination is for their response. But there is, I will note, there is a specific timetable for the owners of the joint-owned polls to respond to poll attachments. So when someone like Comcast applies for, you have to do them in batches. When you apply for poll attachments, there is a defined time period for the response, for the initial write-out estimates, for the time to perform the make-ready, the make-ready estimates, and for the, and then for the make-ready to be completed, and then you issue the ability to attach for that grouping of polls, which allows them to start construction. So they have started construction in one portion of the community, but they haven't been able to prevail beyond that. So when I reviewed, he shared with me there, twenty-nine applications that are out there. Seven of those applications have resulted in licenses, and the other twenty-two are still outstanding. I saw on that listing as many as two hundred and ninety-one days from the time that Comcast had actually paid the make-ready assessments that were done pursuant to the write-out. And most, and the write-outs, and the make-ready estimates had been anywhere from forty-five to fifty-plus days. So I would leave it to others to go back and reference the chapter two eighty, but I know there, there is a violation of that timeline sitting out there currently, and Comcast gave me permission to share this information with you and the public as to the difficulties they're getting, that they're having in obtaining their poll attachment agreements. On the joint-owned polls, those start with Comcast. And I will relate to everyone that the city had the similar experience, and not until our legal consultant associated with the architectural and engineering wrote a very concerted letter referencing the chapter eight eighty timelines. Not until that took place did we actually see a more expeditious process in the city obtaining its poll attachment agreement. So I will leave it at that at this point in time. Other broadband and future fiber construction and/or connections news, Director Nyman, Jim Nyman and I met with Andrew Butcher, Maine Connectivity's new executive director. The meeting was focused on Sanford's latest responses to digital literacy, ongoing with the strategic networks, research on take-rate studies, as well as Sanford Net Fibers Business Connectivity. The weight of the meeting sought for Maine Connectivity to focus a portion of their pending broadband construction funds on business-specific fiber networks addressing the business needs in Maine for economic attraction, expansion, and retention. Prior to the creation of Maine Connectivity Authority, the Connect Maine Authority, I really think they should have named somebody different. It's too close. But the prior Connect, the prior and current Connect Maine Authority started their existence and continued their existence with a different scope of work, primarily addressing the unserved areas within the state. So the limited resources that they were allocated went to the unserved areas of the state. The Maine Connectivity Authority has a different mission. It's newly formed. They have their newly formed board of directors. They've just hired Andrew Butcher as their executive director. The Maine Connectivity Authority, their three primary goals are much broader, and it's in addressing those broader goals, the amount of funding that's coming in there, that we wanted to ensure that the city had its starting input into addressing the expansion of business-specific broadband, because few people talk about that business-specific. They all assume that you can just build a fiber network, absent design criteria, and it addresses any and all needs. That's not the case. So their mission statement is that effective accessible connectivity be universally available in the state. Applaud them for that. That there be secure, affordable, and I want emphasis affordable, reliable, competitive, sustainable, and forward-looking infrastructure that can meet future needs. We talked to them about the affordable aspect. The predominance of the money that's gone out under Connect Maine and/or the prior, not opera funds, but the prior funding that went out there to expand connectivity for students during COVID and such and to that, it went to the legacy providers, because they had the ability to do the poll attachments immediately. They didn't have to apply. They own the polls and such and to that, or somebody they could overlash their system. With the passage of that state and/or federal funds, there never has been a good testing mechanism and assurance that the public benefit is going to get passed back as far as the affordability aspect. I've continued to ask for that statewide, and hopefully that recognition is starting to come into the picture. And that all residents, businesses, and institutions in Maine be able to take full advantage of the economic, health, education, and other opportunities available through connectivity services. So we discussed the importance of network design specific to businesses and how this could vastly improve the state's economy in a globally competitive environment. We also discussed the need for resources for digital literacy, as the lack of knowledge is the greatest impediment to the expansion and utilization of today's broadband capabilities. Director Butcher was very receptive to the dialogue and committed to continue to dialogue with the city and in working with the city as a newly created authority establishes further their guidelines for the use of their significant amounts of funding that will be coming into their purview. Next, COVID, COVID brief. Today's meeting with York County Emergency Management Authority and our ongoing weekly briefing for the past two years has finally reached a point of going bi-weekly due to the continued positive decreases of COVID impacts. Adam Hartwig from the Maine C D C reported out today's stats and trends as being very positive for the reductions of impacts related to COVID. Maine C D C has reduced from daily updates of their data sets to twice weekly now. Therefore, we need to adjust to that bi-weekly reporting, you know. So for example, the three thousand three hundred and three cases they reported out today was actually from last Thursday through to today. So it's not a scary number when you adjust it by the number of days that it's covering. Other positive aspects is the P C R positivity rate dropped from last week at six point two percent down to four point six percent this week. There are forty-one new deaths, twenty-one of which came from vital records. Hospitalizations are down by more than half, one hundred and forty-four non-I C U, forty-four in I C U, and nine on ventilators and four pediatric patients. So as Maine has been following about two weeks behind the Massachusetts trend, we noted that today their Massachusetts P C R rate is one point eight nine percent down from seven point three percent in the prior seven-day period. So if we can expect to see that here in Maine in the next two weeks or even three weeks, that will be significant. One of the biggest elements that we weren't able to resolve today is the U S C D C's continuing reporting on the community levels, i.e. the green, yellow, and orange, no longer red, but orange rating system by counties. York is still reported as orange and/or high, with three counties in Maine now reported out as yellow or medium risk for the major elements they look at in making that assessment. There are no green counties in Maine, while if you look at Massachusetts for the same time period, they are all green or yellow. So I'm shaking my head at that, but they're all green and yellow. So we're asking, Matt Nelson was on the conference call today. He's, Matt as our superintendent, has been as diligent as myself in attending those meetings. He started the questioning on why York County had not dropped to yellow, because our observations are, and the data sets out there support that. We couldn't get answers to that. We did note that the data sets were over a week old, were being used for the current red assessment, and that the positive trend may get us to yellow by the next two-week reporting period when that comes out. But we found inaccuracies as far as on several of the locations on the U S C D C website. It showed all counties in Maine as red, and only one spot on the website showed the three counties in yellow. So we're concerned about the accuracy of being reporting. I also brought up the fact, my knowledge base is that one of the major impacting elements in here, they look at the current number and type of hospitalizations associated with COVID. That impacts us greatly here in York and Cumberland Counties, because we have the largest hospitals, some of the largest hospitals in the state, especially Maine Med, that is handling a large predominance of the highly critical cases with COVID nineteen, that are coming from other areas in the state because of their lack of capacity or inability to treat in the center of these major tertiary centers. That's impacting our numbers into the red. Even though they're not associated within our zip code region, we're still treating them here, and it's impacting our numbers. So I wanted to bring that forward, because I know that the city's current policies that the council has, as far as your rules of procedure, hinge upon the red, yellow, and green designations of this U S C D C map as to when you'll be able to go back live, and we can start releasing meeting spaces and things of that nature. So continuing to track that diligently, and I'll report out as soon as we learn more. Our roads have been posted by our Public Works Director pursuant to city code. He has the delegated authority to do that. So commercial vehicles in excess of ten thousand pounds, those sensitive roads have been posted because of the freeze-thaw cycles that we're in for this time of year and the damage that can incur. And those will be lifted later this spring as the freeze-thaw stops and the road bases dry out. As earlier indicated, the city council is having us look at a listing of roads where there may be permanent weight restrictions likely of twenty-three thousand pounds, registered G V W and/or higher. So we'll bring back a future recommendation on that. City's website redesign pursuant to the council's actions at the last meeting. The revised contract has been signed. Payment is being created and has been submitted out. As discussed at the last meeting, it will take four to six months process from the time to start, from the time we start with the revise. Our communications coordinator, Ms. Walton, continues to look at multiple examples and develop the listing of elements that we will change in the city's implementation of the new website redesign. One of the elements we looked at on Monday, there's a host of favorable websites out there, all of which have on their header the how-do-I section. And when you look at how they implement that across many of the sites, I find that probably to be one of the most useful sections. So rather than F A Qs, frequently asked questions, it's the how-do-I. And when you pull their menus or look at how they organize that, it really is a good representation, because we see, we see residents inside the building and/or on our sites looking for, they don't even know specifically what department they need to be in for what it is they need to get done or what they want to ask about. So this how-do-I section really resolves that, gets you to the point. Therefore, Ms. Walton's earlier observation of the ten-plus clicks to get you to the element of getting a building permit, you would be one, if not two clicks away. So she's done a lot of work in that regard. Sanford Regional Communications Center, we had first communications today with the communications center. The negotiations team from the unit has basically given us the notice to open. I'm feeling like an old-timer now. Somewhere in the legislative process, they hold back, and they no longer have to send the six months, one hundred and eighty-day notice to open to collectively bargain anymore. Wasn't even aware that that was a change in the law, because I've been looking for that notice. But nonetheless, we got that verbally and by Zoom today, so that we're getting ready to open up with them. And I actually have a listing of those elements that they're looking at. But today I focused on further discussion, because it's a completely new negotiations team for this unit, on the city's work on interest-based bargaining, how that relates to long-range planning, creating centers of excellence, how it relates to working conditions for recruitment, retention, and operations there, and how it builds ownership in the overall management and work product within that department from the ground up and from the top down, and we meet in the middle. So the city's used that in a number of bargaining sessions over several units. We, I believe that we used it the last two-year contract that they're in right now, but that team that we worked with last time is no longer there. They've changed, they've changed who's representing the unit now. So we went through that today. And I'll be working with the council in the near future to set guidelines as far as where we go with this particular unit prior to fiscal year end. Then as the mayor brought up, we have our first budget meeting this Thursday at six P M. The information is posted on the city's calendar. You'll find that on the city's webpage, on the front page. Please click the calendar. The budget committee is listed there. You click that, the Zoom link, and the attached information is present there for you as well. A couple of items that I should have put in here that I didn't, that I do want to reference is been in contact with Sheena Sax, who is one of our legal councils on the opioid settlements. We know that they've, they being the legal council, they have made an agreement with the state of Maine as to how the distribution formula will work going forward in the future. It's very ambiguous and very difficult to disseminate, and I've been asking for hard numbers. We, I was, again, this week in communications, we are supposed to get our hard numbers for this first round of settlement funds that are coming into that, the multi-year settlement, no later than May first. Sheena felt that we should have those far sooner than that, but I'm going to wait to report out to the council when I actually get my hands on the numbers, because what I'm going to request, if it's of the magnitude that I believe it's going to be, we will come forward to the council and ask for consideration of the program design, and how that funds may be used towards our licensed clinical social worker within the police department, and how that impacts recidivism as well as diversion in addressing the opioid situation, and perhaps be able to pull back that opera funds that's currently directed in that regard for other utilizations, and use the opioid funds where it has to be used. Also, as part of that last round of communications, there was a request in there. Uh, also, as part of that last round of communications, there was a request in there. The state is going to set up an eleven person panel uh that's going to um oversee and and work with that that state portion of the allocation as to how that will be distributed out for what type of programs and such under that. So I'd like like to talk with the mayor about uh named representative from here within the city. Uh, and I I'll go out on a limb and I'll I'll say that that is Deputy Chief Small. I've asked him for his uh curriculum vitae on on all of the work that he has done on on the prior uh Mayor's Coalition Award Grants that came through from the state that we had a one year uh diversionary program, training of officers and such under that, very successful until the state pulled the funds back at 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 the end of the year, even though we hadn't expended all of our funds. He has that experience under his belt, as well as we all know the work that he's done in the area of homelessness, which has led led to the uh um, well, I've lost the terminology. For the licensed clinical social worker, the Council of Hanselman referenced earlier that has come to us that may through the main options program, he's developed those partnerships. The homelessness piece has absolutely been hand in hand with with mental health and uh the opioid situations and other drug addictions in that. So I would like to talk to the you, Madam Mayor, about his uh putting his name forward for that particular committee. And then I want to correct a misnomer that I I made in the last presentation, the the brief presentation on the municipal budget as the manager's recommendation going forward. I aired when I when I stated that the traffic officer is not in that budget as was presented. Uh, that position is, it's forty two as opposed to forty one positions in there. Uh, my finance director was very adamant about correcting me at the end of that presentation. So um, so there is a traffic officer positioned in there as long as that is, you know, goes through the Budget Committee process and is approved by the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Um, and I'll go out on a limb and just say that um I think that that um group that you were discussing would be lucky to have Deputy Chief Small sit on that committee. So I hope we're successful in getting some representation on that. I think we have something to offer. So good luck with that. Um, and I'm glad to hear about the traffic officer, too. And I'm glad that Ronnie, you know, keeps you honest.
She works at it hard every day.
Yes, it does. All right. Anybody have any questions of Steve before I go on? I don't see any. Um, communications communications and presentations, there are none. Public participation, um, is there anyone here to speak this evening for items that are not on the agenda? I can't see everybody, so if anybody sees a hand up that I'm missing, let me know. I really don't see very many members of the public here this evening. So I will say no, there is nobody here to speak under public participation. Public hearings, the city council will take public comment on the following. Twenty two dash two six two dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Westbrook Creek LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at seventy two Emery Street, Unit four zero five Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty two dash six four dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Northeast Exotics for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at seventy two Emery Street, Unit three ten Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty two dash eight four dash zero one, a public hearing on extension of the ordinance establishing a moratorium on mineral extraction, lagooning, and or creation of ponds for an additional one hundred and eighty days. I'll declare the public hearing open. Steve, are you going to this? You have something to present for this?
Yes, I'll I'll take the the lead off on this. Uh, Director De La Valley is here as our planning director. She's here this evening as well to contribute to this as well as when we get to the uh the reading, the first read on on the moratorium extension. Uh, as Chair of the Mineral Tax Force um Committee, you you will see that when we get to the uh the reading of the reasons for the moratorium extension, we have met nine times uh year to date on the creation of a completely new ordinance for the city of Sanford as it relates to a mineral extraction. Through that series of meetings, we have uh been into this this topic of the currently undefined uh yet uh calling out for um calling out for consideration for lagooning in our own and our current city ordinance. The discussion centered around how mineral extraction operations use water for various types of operations, whether it be for washing, uh, the uh the pits, I'll call them, you know, gravel pits loosely, the the pits, uh, as how they're all of ours are currently internally drained, except for perhaps road structures coming in and such under that. The question of defining um lagooning is 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 digging below of the groundwater table and continuing to do mineral extraction below the groundwater table and leaving that that opening to the groundwater table as a permanent uh closure aspect uh for for that pit or or trying to close that back up. I think the the aha moment for the task force when they were reviewing this and looking through it, uh, and and the recommendation here this evening is to hold until that work is completed is when David Parent, as our representative on there, uh, mostly from the Water District, when he showed us the mapping that all of our current mineral extraction um operations, uh, where those mineral deposits are located, where the current operations are or future ones might be, all of that mineral deposits are on top of significant groundwater aquifers, which differs from some other communities that might have a more isolated gravel deposit that is not on a significant gravel pack groundwater aquifer as they all are here in Sanford. So when that when that realization came forward as part of the discussion, it really brought forward further pause for we need to finish up the ordinance uh as we're working on it currently. I'm very pleased with the work that's being done on that. It's very comprehensive and and likely uh the element of lagooning will be a no recommend uh will be a recommendation not to allow it coming out of the mineral task force as the ordinance is uh as I perceive is currently being developed. And I'll lend my input there as part of the the public hearing.
Okay, um, is there anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? I cannot see with the sharing if there's anybody's hand up, but anybody feels that anything else needs to be added? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda twenty two dash six three dash zero one, the consent agenda will be approved without objection. Old business, there is none. New business, twenty one dash four zero seven dash zero one, ordered to extend the ordinance establishing a moratorium on mineral extraction, lagooning, and or creation of ponds for an additional one hundred and eighty days to allow time for the mineral extraction task force to complete its work on development of land use regulations governing this activity. And this is a first reading. Is there any discussion by the council? Any questions that they have of anyone? I don't see it up. Counselor Martel, go ahead.
Um, Steve, uh, has anyone expressed an interest or an issue with extending this? And I think I may have an echo, but I'm not sure.
You do.
Yeah, so we we have not had any uh anybody push forward as far as uh any issue as far as the city extending this. Uh, city currently doesn't have any active applications open requesting lagooning. Uh, my my, again, my my continued concern, and that's been raised through the development of the uh uh under the task force and developing the new ordinance, is lagooning is referenced referenced uh within the city's current ordinance, but there are no standards for that. You can you can go to Department of Environmental, Maine Department of Environmental Protection, there is the allowance for lagooning. There's a permit process for that. It's extremely extensive. It takes about two years because you have to do a series of studies, test wells, hydro geological study to prove that you are not going to cause contamination pursuant to the creation of a lagoon or the lagooning activity. Um, and we know here in Sanford that we have had a situation of lagooning being created under the Maine Turnpike Authority's land for the creation of a wetland that resulted in the destruction of the contamination of one of our public wells. Uh, so I think that was really, again, that all of that information came in as part of the discussions as within the task force and the recognition of Sanford's unique situation of those deposits being on top of and part of significant uh gravel packed aquifers.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Martel?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Counselor Stackpole, you have your hand up?
I do. Uh, I just wanted to say that from my perspective of what it it's been fairly limited involvement in in specifically what the city manager is talking about, but from what I've gleaned from afar, my work on the zoning subcommittee, I'm I'm in full support of this. I think that uh digging into the water table uh is a very serious issue. I know that's not specifically what this uh is about, but digging into the water table is is a uh a very environmentally damaging uh thing that I think that as a community, uh, as I've become more aware of it, uh, become more uh concerned that that we prevent this from happening moving in the future. And it's not as simple as also, people may know this, but it's not as simple as you dig a hole, hit the water table, you fill it back in, and everything is is okay again. Uh, it really does damage the the water table, even when the 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 lagoons or whatever are are filled back in. So um, I I'm behind this. I know this is just to uh grant uh another hundred and eighty days to look at it, but the concept of this, I think, is very important, so.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
You're muted. I'm going to disagree a little bit because um lagooning is actually a fairly common practice, and I understand what the city manager is saying, and I'm fine with the moratorium, but I think this needs to be continued to be discussed because you're talking about a very cowboy like behavior on the part of the Maine Turnpike Authority that was actually a gravel pit that had was no longer in use. They purchased it in order to mitigate their wetland when they expanded the turnpike, and they dug way too deep, and there was very little to no oversight on what they were doing because of who they are. So um gravel pits have a lot of of oversight, and lagooning is actually fairly common with gravel pits. So I think it's ve- we have to be very cautious using the Maine Turnpike Authority's horrendous, the thing they did to our community that was horrendous, and separate it from, you know, gravel pits that we're hoping to um keep an eye on, you know, have inspected, you know, have reports given. That's not what the Maine Turnpike Authority did. So I I actually hate the fact that it's being used as an example of a gravel pit. So there you go. Thank you.
Steve, do you have anything that you want to add?
Uh, two two things on that. The Mineral Task 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 Force has industry representation on there. Um, at least one of those represents a a large industry sector that has multiple pits uh in multiple communities that does do lagooning uh as 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 a part and will be part of their restoration plan. In other words, they're going to leave this behind, and they continue to extract gravel from below that water base. That industry representative head recognition of the differences that we're that I've been discussing here this evening. DEP did their work under the the state permitting uh regulations with DEP. So if you use DEP as as that standard that oversees permitting of that, I would argue that there hasn't been sufficient oversight by DEP if that was the end result. So the um the extension of the moratorium language is is here before the council tonight. It's in your packet. It was drafted by our legal counsel, Philip Sauce here. Uh, I wanted to point out the recognitions in here. Um, it says um whereby the problem giving rise to the need for the moratorium still exists and that reasonable progress, this is the significant piece, reasonable progress is being made to alleviate the problem, giving rise to the need for the moratorium. That's in reference to the nine plus meetings that the task force has had year to date. Uh, and and it has a recognition that the council finds that the problem giving rise to the need for the moratorium still exists, that during the term of the moratorium, the city has made reasonable progress to alleviate. Again, that's in reference to our uh new ordinance that's being developed and will come forward to the city council in the in the near term. And then he references the state law that allows that to be extended for the additional hundred day, hundred and eighty days, should the council authorize that this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? So once again, this will come back in two weeks, and that's when we will vote on it. Twenty one dash four five five dash zero one, ordered to authorize the city of Sanford and the State of Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry into a project agreement for the recreational trail program grant for Moussum Way Trail Connections to improve trails near Sanford High School. Um, I'm going to um let this presentation occur first, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve. Steve, who's going to do this?
Uh, I'll ask Brady Lloyd, our Parks and Recreation Director, to to speak on this topic tonight. Uh, but I will before I start to say that I really enjoy working with the Department of Agricultural Conservation and Forestry on these type of grants uh for the reason being that they're they're straightforward, the the guidelines for utilization of the funds is not onerous, uh, they have good oversight on it, and the community has a great working partnership with the department as far as these grants are concerned. So Brady, I'll turn it over to you for a project description, and I have the materials here. You can ask me to pull up anything for you as as needed.
Thank you, Steve. Um, I just want to start by saying that the council voted to apply for the grant back in September of twenty twenty one, um, and now we were awarded this grant. The numbers have changed a little bit. Um, the federal award is now thirty three thousand. It was thirty two thousand um when the grant was applied for because the local match changed a little bit. So there's eight thousand dollars that will be coming. Um, and I can say fifty eight forty will be from the Sanford Trails CAP CIP, um, and twenty one sixty will be from the Moussum Way Land Trust totaling eight thousand dollars of cash. And then there's a thousand dollars of in kind donated labor from the Sanford Regional Technical Center, which brings our local match up a little bit. So instead of having a forty thousand dollar um total, which was applied for back in September, we now have a forty two thousand dollar um total.
Thank you, Brady. I I just want to say before I ask for a motion that this is a really, for me, those are trails, the ones that you're they're being proposed to fix are ones that we walk on, and it'll be really nice to have them um just for for regu- not just for the students and for the cross country team and for the youth of the high school, but for everyone who wants to walk on all those trails. There'll be nice connectors. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Hanselman. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Martel can have that.
Second by Counselor Martel. Any more discussion by the council? Seeing none, I will call the roll. All right. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also, yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Uh, Brady, when do you think that'll be starting?
I have a meeting next Thursday with Doug Beck, who's the representative, um, and I'll get more info from there. But we do have a phase one study that's ready to go after that meeting um from a company out of Auburn that is going to report to an acronym that I'm not sure what they stand for, but um it's something to do with the historical something of Maine.
Thank you.
Yes.
Twenty two dash five seven dash zero one, ordered to approve and authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement between the city of Sanford and the Eastern Slopes Airport Authority for the services of airport management pursuant to legal review. Um, Steve, are you going to introduce this and then Allison or?
Yes, I'm sorry, didn't didn't have the Yes, I'm sorry, didn't, didn't have the chair on. I just want to go back. The, the acronym is SHIPO, State Historic Preservation Organization. Uh, because of the proximity to the river, they always have to examine it for, uh, archaeological, uh, aspects, uh, so we don't impact that. So there's no excavation, there's only addition of, uh, surface materials there, so it shouldn't be an issue, but nonetheless, it's a required report. So, back to the item that's just called out. Uh, this is a proposed, uh, contract for services. Uh, it would, it would involve our airport manager, uh, Ms. Navia. She's here this evening to, to talk about this further. Um, why don't I turn it over to Allison to talk to you about the, um, the scope of services that comes into this contract and how that would work and, and the whys. So Allison?
Good evening. I'm Allison Navia. I'm the airport manager. I was approached maybe three years ago to start thinking about this by the Eastern Slopes Airport Authority. At that time, there was really way too much going on at Sanford that really needed a lot of focus. Um, so I kept putting them off, kept putting them off, figuring they would figure out some, another way to, to solve, um, the things that were going on at Freiburg. And he was, Donnie was just really persistent. Donnie Tibido is the chair over there. Um, so for those of you that may not know, when I was in college, um, studying for aviation management in the summers, my parents lived in Freiburg, and every summer I worked at the Freiburg Airport, and I cut grass and replaced runway lights, um, and did all those kind of things. So started out over there, and I really just have a, a great fondness for that airport. I see a lot of things in that airport that are very similar to Sanford, you know, ten, twelve, fifteen years ago, where it has a lot of potential. Um, so it's a much smaller airport, acreage-wise, runway-wise, um, but they're, they're at a point where it's grown and cannot be sustained anymore by the, the way that it's been running. So they really need a professional, um, ser- some kind of professional services there to help them out with that. So that's what they've asked us for. Um, Steve and I kicked the idea around for a few months, um, before we settled on this. So this agreement is written up, really mirroring the agreement that the city has with the assessor. So it's very similar, um, and it would be for the term of one year. So to get them on their feet with a full review of a lot of their documents. So it's not a, it's not a day-to-day operational type of management that'll be going on. It's more of a consulting type of thing, and I, I'm putting in eight extra hours a week in addition to, um, all the work I do for the City of Sanford for, um, IZG. So I'll be going over all of their policy documents, all of their leases, all those types of things, um, and getting them all set up and standardized so that they know what's going on. Also doing, um, maybe some workshops with the town of Freiburg. So the, the way that airport's run, I always like to say, if you've seen one airport, uh, you've seen one airport. They're, they're all run completely differently, um, and they're all set up a little bit differently from each other. So for instance, in Bar Harbor, the county owned and operated the airport, and I worked for the county commissioners. Here, the city owns the airport, um, and I work for the city. In Freiburg, the town owns the infrastructure and the property, but they have a lease with this, um, Eastern Slope Airport Authority, which is a quasi-governmental, um, organization, and they have that lease to operate and manage the airport for the town. So instead of the town having a, an employee that does it directly, they have this organization. It's a bunch of volunteers that do it. Um, so, and they do a very good job for, uh, for what it, what it has been the last few years. So they've got some good projects on board. Um, so the, the way that the contract is set up, it's my fully burdened rate. So the city gets, um, a portion of my fully burdened cover, costs covered, and then I get the extra, um, pay of eight, eight extra hours a week. Um, the other additional thing is mileage. So, um, I'm only foreseeing really going there a few times in the beginning. Um, and as I said, a lot of it is gonna be really paperwork review, and of course Zoom makes things pretty easy these days on those lines. So that's the agreement. So we'll start off for one year, see where they're at at the end of it, and, um, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Allison. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Council Martel to approve. Is there a second?
A second, ma'am.
Second by Council Hanselman. Questions by the council and discussion. Council Hanselman, go ahead.
Thank you. And I think, Allison, you answered my, my primary question was your capacity, um, to provide these services while still, you know, providing the important role you do for us at our airport. Um, but so my comment is more, uh, that I think, and I hope that this feels like, uh, a real compliment and, um, you know, just it, it goes to the accomplishments that you've done at our airport and really, um, shows how much you shine in the industry. And I think you should be really proud, um, that you are, you've been requested to fulfill this role. And, and I think it's great that you're passionate to, to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council, anybody else have any comments? Council Martel, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo some of the other comments. And sorry about the echo in my, my, uh, voice here, but.
You're better now.
You do a great job.
You're much better.
What's that?
You're better now.
You're much better now. It's fine.
Oh, okay. I hear an echo. Maybe it's just because I'm on the phone.
You don't, though.
No, you do a great job, and, uh, I think this is a good compliment, and I, I think you'd be able to help them out quite a bit. So I'm looking forward to letting you do this for the year, and we'll see what it looks like after that.
Thank you.
I, I'll just add, Allison, that we're happy to share you. We just don't want to lose you.
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, so just realize that. We, we understand what we're doing here. We're sharing you, and they need to understand that, okay?
Okay.
All right, we have a m- motion and a second. Council Martel, your hand's not still up, right?
Uh, City Cop? Madam Mayor, uh, uh, city manager had, uh, had his hand up.
Oh, he had his hand up, too? Go ahead, Steve.
I could just recognize the, the, um, you know, the regionalization of, of Allison's expertise going into the, the Freiburg Airport. Um, you know, we, we've, as part of this process, we've met with the, uh, Freiburg Town Manager as well, um, dozen years, uh, well, twenty-some-odd years ago, when I took on the city of, of Caribou, and they, they said after the fact, oh, by the way, we have no FBO at the airport, we have no manager. So I had to become a certified airport manager and take, take that on. I, I would have begged for the services, for professional services, uh, uh, like Allison. So, um, I, I know where Freiburg is at. I also recognize out of this process, I'm reading the, the, the original agreement from nineteen sixty-one as part of this process, and, and I, and we've, we've talked with the, their board of directors, their, and I, and I say this politely, they're, they're aging out. Nobody's stepping in that does that kind of community service anymore at no pay, right, and, and runs an airport, just because there's something they do for their community. It just doesn't happen in this day and age. Um, and yes, uh, I can be quoted, Donnie Tibido has been relentless. He's an old tater farmer. I know Donnie well from my past history. Used to market against him and everything else. He is relentless, and therefore, um, I'd like to see this go forward and, and get Freiburg on the right track so that that, that community can take over the airport with confidence that it's in the right place and, and have that great starting point. So, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Um, any other questions and discussion? Seeing none, I will call the vote. Council Martel?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also, yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Okay. Twenty-two dash eight-five dash zero one. Order to approve a temporary land lease between the City of Sanford and Pike Industries for a construction lay-down area on a month-to-month basis during the twenty-twenty-two construction season at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by Council Stackpole, second by Deputy Mayor Hurley. I figured there wasn't gonna be a lot of discussion on this issue, but, um, just lay it out for us. Um, Allison, I assume?
Yep, very well. So this, this is one of those last-minute things, um, that comes up from time to time. That's an opportunity for us to make a little bit of revenue and benefit a project that's going on downtown this year. So Pike is the one that's reconstructing part of two oh two and, um, one oh nine, and it would be very difficult for them to maintain the schedule that they've proposed if they had to drive the material all the way to Wells and back, um, from those two different locations. So they approached us. We have that area all set up and ready to go. This was the lay-down area that we previously used for the solar project. So it's all permitted for that. Um, it has a separate gate that they'll be able to use, so it will have no impact on aviation operations whatsoever. Um, and we'll be able to make, you know, a little bit of extra revenue and help hopefully keep that, that project on schedule downtown.
Thank you, Allison. Any questions or discussion by the council? I will call the roll then. Um, Council Martel?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also, yes. That is unanimous of all those present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Twenty-two dash six-eight dash zero one. Order to approve changes to the Parks and Recreation Department's summer camp fee structure as proposed. I gather Brady, you're gonna do this, and then I'll ask for a motion. After, this did go through subcommittee, just so everyone knows.
So what we're proposing is, we currently offer summer camp. Um, the cost is four hundred fifty dollars for Sanford-Springvale residents and six hundred and seventy-five dollars for non-residents. What we are proposing is that we jump for residents up to six hundred dollars and for non-residents up to eight hundred dollars. But in doing so, we're going to incorporate the cost of field trips, which in the past have been, um, paid for the day of, um, with cash, which leads to us having, um, camp directors bringing hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars to field trip venues. Um, we're hoping to alleviate that, and we'll just have the, the cost of field trips included. Um, minimum wage is increased. Um, we are, we're trying to offer competitive wages, um, for our staff. We're, we're fighting just about every other business around town and trying to hire and retain staff. And when it's all said and done, we're really, with the field trip budget that we're, we're hoping to offer of around seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars per child, we're really only increasing the cost of camp by about fifty to seventy-five dollars for residents, and then it's going up the same for non-residents. So, any questions? We do, oh, one last thing. We do offer financial, we do offer financial assistance. Um, there's a scholarship application that can be filled out, and then it goes through general assistance. It's based on, um, the income of the family and the number of, um, dependents they have on the, the income.
Thank you, Brady. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Council Martel, I mean, Council Hanselman, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Stackpole. Discussion by the council. I'm looking for hands up. I'm gonna just say upfront that I think this is a really, um, even with these increases, it's still a great deal for residents, and, um, I think for non-residents in particular, there's hardly a place where they'd be able to send their kids for the whole summer and have a program that would keep them busy. Um, go ahead, Council Martel.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, scrolling through that list, it looks like it's pretty comparable to other areas, and, uh, having a set fee for the whole thing, including the, the field trips, probably just makes it easier all around. Absolutely.
Any other discussion by the council before I call on members of the public? Seeing none, um, I will call on Diane Connolly.
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, Diane from Springville. Um, I have a question for Brady. If, uh, a family, a resident of Sanford or Springville, would like to go up to the rec with, let's say, six family members, have a barbecue, is there a minimum number of people before the charges are brought forth?
We haven't gotten to that part, Diane, yet, okay? Diane's still on the, um, that's the next agenda item, okay?
Okay, if you could answer that then, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
That'd be super. Thank you. Okay, so we are still on the Parks and Rec summer camp fee structure. Um, if there's no other discussion, then I am going to, we have a motion on the table in a second. I will call the roll. Council Martel?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes, yes.
And I am also, yes. So that is unanimous of all, all those present. Okay. Twenty-two dash six-seven dash zero one. Order to approve changes to the city parks, facilities, and field rental fees structure as proposed. Brady, you're gonna present this one, too, correct?
Yes. Um, as you'll see, uh, I, I kinda made a confusing color-coded key, but there is a key at the top of the page. Um, in black is the prices we would like to see charged. Um, in red parentheses is what we're currently charging. There's some striked-out, um, text that we would like to take out of this document, and in blue is where we weren't charging, um, for facilities, and they weren't included in the last proposal. So first, I want to start with saying all of these rates, um, in regards to athletic fields are going to be appro- applied to private groups. Um, Sanford-Springvale organizations with resident participants such as Little League Babe Ruth Legion, Sanford Youth Soccer, SSYAA, and adult softball do not get charged by the city. Um, so this is really targeting travel teams where people pay to play, and then also travel teams that host tournaments at our facilities that, um, come from out of state such as Massachusetts. Um, you can see here, there's some supporting evidence, um, saying that we're just trying to raise our fees to cover our costs. Um, it costs quite a bit of money. A lot of these games happen on weekends when we're paying, uh, a premium for time and a half or double time for staff to operate. Um, and also the cost of material has increased over the last few years. Um, in regards to city facilities that aren't athletic fields such as Go'n Park Gazeebo, um, we're proposing that the pavilions go up about ten dollars for the small, and the gazebo is having a pretty good jump of sixty dollars. Um, why that one went up so much is because a lot of what we've seen in the last couple of years is it gets rented out, um, for events such as weddings, shows, and concerts, and then typically it's only being used for an hour or so, and then they're going to rent the larger pavilions, um, down at the bottom of the hill across the street. Um, Gateway Park and Central Park were not included in our, the last time that this document was updated, so we would like to propose that for residents, it's twenty-five dollars per hour, and non-residents, it's fifty dollars, just falling, follow, excuse me, falling in line with, um, what we're charging for the other, um, areas. And one other note is that we would like to strike out a maximum charge for residents. So if you're a, or for non-residents, excuse me. So if you're a resident, if you rent a facility for more than five hours, you'll only get charged that hour, hourly rate of five hours. So for, say, Go'n Park Gazeebo, if you had the pavilion at twenty-five dollars, the max charge would be a hundred and twenty-five dollars. But for residents, we, or for non-residents, we would continue to charge an hourly rate that they do rent the park out.
Okay, before I open it up for discussion and questions, um, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hurley. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Council Hanselman. Uh, discussion or questions by the council? Council Hanselman, go ahead.
Thank you. I had, um, just two questions. One, uh, primarily thinking about Gateway Park and Colesworth Park. We assess a rental fee. Are we ensuring that the bathroom facilities are available unlocked and open during that time?
Yes, they come in and get a key from our office, and then it's due back, I believe it's like seventy-two hours at forty-eight, seventy-two hours after the event's over. And there's also a deposit.
That, that makes it worth it to me personally. No, but thank you. And then the, the second question is, um, in terms of the city field, um, rentals, I don't actually know if our school department is assessing or doing any field rentals, but if they are, are we lining up with their assessment or rates at all?
To the best of my knowledge, I don't believe they're renting out their facilities.
Thank you.
Council Martel? Counselor Martel?
Yeah, I was just wondering where some of these numbers came, especially the larger increases.
Yep. We looked at South Portland. I called O L B for the ballpark. There's some, thank you. So Old Orchard Beach, we're following in line with some of their park rental fees, or, excuse me, South Portland. And then for some of the larger increases such as the athletic fields, we're following the ballpark from O L B, which actually has a, a cheaper per game rate. But when you go through adding on all the add-ons that they, they ask for on top of it, so ours is just a one lump sum. It includes the scoreboard, the P A system, they have an hourly rate on top of that, which also adds to the cost. So say you rent the, I believe it's the P A system and the scoreboard, it's thirty dollars an hour. If you have a nine inning baseball game, that's typically two and a half, three hours, it's probably an additional ninety dollars to rent that field and use it.
And that, that's all information that was in our backup in Granicus, if you wanna examine it further, Jonathan.
Okay.
Um, I have one question, Brady, and I should've asked this at the Subcommittee, but what about the farmer's market? Will they qualify for just a free rental? Okay, I just wanna make sure that they can still have their.
Yep. And there's also other organizations that we make an exception to, like we were contacted by Girl Scouts earlier today and they wanna sell cookies there on the weekends at Central Park. We're not gonna charge a Girl Scout troop to, to do their fundraiser. So you know what I mean? We're, we're, we do make exceptions when we see fit.
And, and did you hear Diane Connolly's question?
If she could repeat it.
Go ahead, if you can remember it, or you want me to have her call her back up again to ask it.
Could she repeat it?
Diane, could you repeat your question, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brady, uh, what, if a resident has, let's say, a small family gathering of like maybe six, five people, they wanna go up to Holesworth Park, have a little small barbecue, spend an hour or two, are you gonna charge the resident to do that?
Yes.
What is the minimum number of people before you start charging?
We don't have a minimum. It's if they want to rent out the pavilions. If they wanna go up there and have a barbecue, they can do that, but it's when they start renting out the pavilions, which hold, I think the large one holds eighty-four people. I'm unsure of the small one, but I know it's at least twenty, in the twenty range. That's when the charges start, is for the.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, and I think we'll vote. Counselor Martel?
I'm gonna vote no, 'cause.
Thank you. Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counsel, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is four in favor and one opposed. Motion passes. Okay, let me get to that. Okay, twenty-two dash eight six dash zero one. Order to accept the resignation of Mo Calle from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve with regret.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hurley. And a second by?
Second.
Second by Counselor Martel. We have a motion and a second. I will, unless there's discussion, it is with regret, we'll call the roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is a unanimous vote.
Madam Mayor, before Brady leaves, one quick question which he can answer later. Do we have some sort of a, a document that if you haven't paid or you owe the city fees that you can't actually lease property? Cause that might be something we wanna make sure we have firmly down. It's because I would hate to continue to rent it to a group that doesn't pay their bills to us. So just, just something to think about as we go forward.
I can touch on that.
Go ahead.
Briefly, we don't have a document per se, but within our software, MyRec, where they rent the facilities out, we can see if they have a, an account balance prior to them renting it out and we can put a hold. I'm not sure if we're currently doing this, but it's something I can look into tomorrow. We can put a hold on their account if they do owe us money. I can't say if they owe the city money in any other capacity, but through our, our software, we can put a hold on their account and it wouldn't allow them to register or to rent out facilities.
Has it been a problem with people paying their rental fees?
I mean, I've been here for three months and we haven't rented anything out yet, cause we've been going through this process, so.
I'm sure you would've heard if it had been a problem, though.
To, to my knowledge, it hasn't been. People are, they have to pay upfront and then they come in and they get their, their, we had, I think it's a twenty-five dollar cash deposit to get the keys to the facilities of the places that are rented.
Oh, so yeah. I've no, I mean honestly, on all the years that I've been involved with this, that has never been a problem that I've heard that the city's had, but. Okay, thank you. Twenty-two dash nine one dash zero one. Order to accept the bid for the removal of identified asbestos containing material from the eighteen Winter Street building from Atlantic Environmental Contractors in the firm's fixed price amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Is Ian going to do this this evening, Steve?
He is. Ian, do you wanna control the screen? No, I don't need to control the screen. We did a public bid. We had a pre-bid. Three bidders attended and we had two bids submitted. They were within approximately five hundred dollars of each other. I think the, the prices submitted are reasonable. It's a fair amount of work that's going to be taking place in the eighteen Winter Street building. This is a dangerous building. We're working on preservation and with, with the hope that, that, that we won't have to demolish this building. It's a, it's a sizable building. And through discussions with the land bank, we've discussed as well removing the building in the back. It's a, it's a shed garage type, type structure and the, the failed deck in the back. There's asbestos in that and we'll start on this first. And then we'll move on to the, to the back of this building. There's been a fair number of break-ins in this, in this building. It's regularly boarded up. The, there's a property management company involved that I've recently observed that they're replacing handrails in a, in a, in a, an abandoned structure. So not, not putting the best investments into it. But that's the bid. It's, it's pretty straightforward and it's at the recommendation of the land bank, although they didn't review the bid prices we did discuss at their last meeting.
Thank you, Ian. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Counselor Martel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. Any more discussion by the, by the council? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley? And I am also a yes. She said yes, even though she was muted, I did see her.
Yes, 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 yes. I'm trying not to make sure that there's no noises coming from my computer.
You're doing fine. Okay, that is unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash nine eight dash zero one. Be it resolved to formalize a revised agreement with Maine DOT that encompasses previous varied funding agreements into a single agreement to be submitted as a municipal financial commitment towards the RACE grant application in the sum total of those construction funds in lieu of those already previously committed under the respective former agreements in the amount of one million, wait a minute, one million eight hundred and ten thousand ninety dollars? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okey dokey. Then I'm gonna let you explain this first, Steve, or whoever's gonna do this, and then we'll ask for the motion.
I'm gonna turn this over to our RACE grant director, Director Hill of Public Works. There's your new title, Matt.
Great. Yeah, I, to be honest with you, I'm not sure if we should do this one or the next one on the agenda first. The next one is consideration of accepting a proposal, a grant partnership with Maine DOT for the Park and Ride. The Park and Ride would be part of that one point eight million. But basically, Maine DOT has approached us to bundle several of our state and municipal projects together into a RACE grant application. And the spirit of this agreement would be to take the funds that the city has already earmarked for participation with Maine DOT through several agreements and bundle them into one overarching agreement, which would be a municipal part, partnership in taking all those funds and, and putting them into matching funds for the RACE grant. The RACE grant is typically eighty percent federally funded and twenty percent state locally funded. So that, that and our preliminary estimates on what the RACE grant, the total project cost puts us in around ten percent. So it's for a municipality, it's a, it's a big commitment. And I'm putting this forward to the council for continued resolution in support of that. Such a letter is required as part of the grant application to secure such funding. So, you know, if this were to pass, that would go over in our RACE grant application.
Can I just ask, well, let me just ask for a motion to approve first and then we can go to questions, because I think there might be a couple. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Deputy Mayor Hurley. I just, this is primarily, Matt, so that it frees up state money that was already committed and substitutes it with federal money, correct? Basically, so that, I'm saying that it's, it's kind of like they're just gonna be able to make, if we get this RACE grant, it, it frees up money that they've committed to us already and it's then part of the RACE grant.
Yes, i- in, in a sense, it, it takes money that we've already committed and puts it towards a higher purpose. Uh, you know, there's, out of the RACE grant application, there's, there's five parts. Downtown, Cottage Street, Park and Ride, William Osprey Primary and Riverside Ave, which is Mouse and Prom, and the park. So three of those, the three major ones, Downtown Cottage Street and Mouse Prom, already have pre-existing agreements. What's next on the agenda is, is to consider an agreement for the Park and Ride, but it would, it would take those monies that the city has already committed and say, instead of honoring those agreements, we're gonna agree to put them into one overarching agreement so that, you know, Maine DOT still would be participating, but we would be getting a, a big slug of money from the federal government.
Right. So it just frees up, I mean, it, it's really a good thing for the state and for, for Sanford.
Yeah, there's, there's a considerable amount of notoriety. If we were to be awarded a RACE grant, it's about one in ten that actually gets it. So it is, you know, it's a big deal to get one and it would help to keep us on the map.
Okay, any other? Steve, you have anything that you wanna add to this? If, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I really appreciate, so M D O T has been a great partner in this. This is a minimum of an eighteen million dollar grant application. Those numbers are being updated for, for current cost assessments. But as we know, these, these win numbers that we have here now, this is eighteen million dollar scope of work, which the city had already committed as match funds towards each of these. This does not dissolve the P P I agreements, the M P I's, the Safe Roots to School, all of those prior agreements that are part of these, part of these win numbers, they're not resolved, but they're consolidated under this, this M O U, which will allow the department to create a new win number for these projects collectively. Because if awarded, if and when awarded the RACE grant, you can only assign that to a single, single win number, right? So we, we need that to occur. If not awarded the, the RACE grant funds in, in the minimum amount of eighteen million dollars, these prior agreements stay in place and we'll move forward on those as rapidly as, as possible. In this RACE grant, is, there's an increased scope of works, there's the improvements to Central Park and such under that, that is not part of these prior win numbers and there's other benefits towards moving for, for the RACE grant as well. So for all of that, it's been a great partnership. M D O T is paying for, the consultant is writing the RACE grant for us, although I wanna commend Director Hill for the extensive emphasis, extensive amount of work that he's putting into this to consolidate the information, to gather the information, to put that out on, on shared drives that allows the consultant to move forward on this work. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, do I have, did I already ask for a motion on this one? We did, didn't we? Or did I? I did, okay. Counselor Hanselman, your hand is up.
Thank you. So Steve or Matt, are there any concerns or downsides that we should just be aware of in the sense of putting these under one win number? And we're already committed to them except for the forty-two thousand, which I, I do wonder if we're out of order a little bit on that. But, you know, are there concerns that we should just be aware of in that consolidation of all these projects under, under one umbrella?
We've had, we've had verbal assurance from Maine DOT that those, those agreements stand. It's, trying to get everything under one umbrella is, is part of the RACE grant. If it doesn't happen, then we'll revert to our pre-existing agreements. And, and I guess I, I forgot to mention, you know, the, the breakup of that one point eight million is, is essentially, there's one million in Cottage Street for construction, there's seven hundred thousand and change into Mouse and Prom, and then there's a proposed forty-two thousand and change for the construction of the Park and Ride. This, Sanford has not as of yet committed any construction funding to, towards downtown. And, and right now, as this stands, it wouldn't, that's not to say that we might not do so in the future, but, but as per this agreement, it's, it's, there's no construction funding in the downtown, but Sanford's participating in yet.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second, then I will call the roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. And I'm assuming it's okay to vote on this one next, Steve, even though we, they, 'cause I figure you would've put it in a different order if you wanted me to. So twenty-two dash nine nine dash zero one. Order to accept a state municipal agreement with Maine DOT for win two six three zero six point zero zero, construction of Sanford Municipal Park and Ride. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move with your proof.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Martel. I know we've discussed this before at the council level, but is there more discussion that needs to, do, do we need any more explanation?
So this comes from the joint land use study that the city's participated in with the town of Kidery and the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard that was funded as a, a regional study. The shipyard funded that along with Maine Department of Transportation. And out of that, one of the recommendations for the city of Sanford was, just a moment, was that in recognition of the fifteen plus van pools that we have running out of Sanford, plus the other number of individuals that commute individually from Sanford to the shipyard for employment, and the city of Sanford has the largest employment base of any municipality out there, that a Park and Ride facility is part of the recommendations that came out of the joint land use study. From that, the city was invited to put in a letter to the Maine Department of Transportation for funding. Council authorized that. We put a letter of funding forward and they have now come back and accepted that under this cost share arrangement that I'll let Matt talk about. And the design itself, I'll pull that up here on the screen. Department is designing this in-house as, as it's laid out here. So the Park and Ride facility, this being Emerson Street and then Main Street occupies the rear portion of the former Emerson School lot. The Cumberland Farms bought the entire lot. They only use that portion that they currently have built on and then they gifted back to the municipality that rear acreage. The city has retained that, they've allowed the church. The city has retained that. They've allowed the, uh, church across the street to utilize that for parking. And they've done some plowing there and such under that. Um, but this would be for the creation of a park and ride facility where buses could come in here, van pools could come in here and pick up people from the shipyard. It's also can be utilized by other people that are, are collectively van pooling or such under that, commuting to and from their workplace. Um, when we, um, retained, when the city, when the property is given back to the city, you know, there's an entry point here in the current parking lot of Cumberland Farms. We obtained a deeded right-of-way from Emerson Street onto the Cumberland Farms property and into this rear acreage, as you see designed in here. We retained that legal right-of-way and we, we're designed to exercise that as part of the construction of the park and ride facility. And Matt has had communications with them and they're receptive to this as well. Uh, it would allow for the utilization of the four-way intersection and the lit intersection that was part of that construction can be utilized by this facility as well. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I-
Um, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I would just add too, uh, because this is a potential add to the raise grant, we, once we kind of added to the scope of work, we need to get ready to board trying to meet the federal requirements. So the city is, uh, utilized their own engineering agreement with Coral Palmer Consultants. And they're taking over the design on this one. This is the concept prepared by city engineer, uh, Matt Preventure, uh, to get the wheels turning. Uh, but Coral Palmer has stepped in now. They're going to be, uh, you know, going through all the, the minutia of the federal requirements. Uh, we have had a kickoff meeting to accelerate the schedule on this one in order to get a preliminary quantity, an estimate together for submission as part of the raise grant. Some of the things that came up in, in the kickoff meeting for the project uh, was the potential participation of a bus shelter, uh, in cooperation with York County Community Action. Uh, there was some discussion about, uh, restoring Greyhound bus service to downtown Sanford, uh, with this, uh, being a potential, uh, pickup drop-off location. And, um, uh, there's also potentially a carve-out, uh, for, uh, a non-participating electric vehicle charging station, uh, which is not allowed to be, uh, used with federal funds. But, uh, if it were to be kind of intended that way, uh, that would also be like a good, uh, bell and whistle for the raise grant with, uh, electric vehicle, uh, infrastructure investment.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions by counselors or comments? Counselor Hanselman?
And this may be more an aside, but, uh, and I'm fairly new to the council. Um, it feels like, Matt, we're seeing a high volume of these, um, partnership initiatives and grant funding projects. And would you attribute that to the fact that we invested in bonding and have been shovel-ready, so to speak, on projects? Is, is that what's really ramped up our ability to, to do these, um, partnerships with Maine DOT?
Yeah, and sure, it cer- it certainly has. Uh, you know, when I first started here, I, I brought, uh, Maine DOT Region One engineer Kyle Hall to Sanford. And I said, you know, I'm in this new position, Kyle, you know, how can, uh, Maine DOT help me? And his response was, why do I want to come spend a dollar in Sanford if you're not going to maintain that? So that set me on this course of, you know, first, we have to improve our maintenance programs. Uh, second of all, we have to show commitment towards this infrastructure we're maintaining. And then third is we're showing, uh, a big commitment locally to improve what we've got. So putting that six-point-two million dollar bond through, absolutely, you know, big shot on the arm. Uh, continued partnership opportunities, Maine DOT, their funding is pinched too. Uh, maybe, maybe not in the next coming years as more, as much as it was previously. For good partners, they're looking for professional partners. They're looking for communities who can reasonably advocate for themselves and then broaden and strengthen their tax base in order to support maintaining that infrastructure that is so critical to our economy. So I think their head's in the right place. Uh, Sanford has shown our heads in the right place. And it's coming together in a really great way. And now, you know, hopefully we're going to take it to the federal level.
Thank you. Um, any other counselors, discussion or questions? I see Diane Connolly, member of the public. Go ahead, Diane. You have a question?
Yes, I do for Matt. Matt, what's the timeline for the decision of this grant? When, when do we expect to hear?
Uh, the grant deadline is April fourteenth and I seem to remember decisions are due like mid to late summer. But I, I, I would have to review the grant, nofo. That's, that's all-
September first, Matt, September first.
Okay. Yeah, so, uh, you know, not incidentally, we've already had conversations with our, uh, national representatives, senators, Collins, King, and, uh, Representative Pingree's office have all been very supportive so far. Uh, we're expecting letters of support from them. And, uh, I've actually, just the last couple of weeks, had just a great, uh, response by email of letters of support from everyone concerning downtown. Uh, it's, it's really cool to see the outpouring of support for this.
Excellent.
If I could go back to, to answer Counselor Hanselman's, uh, inquiry about the investments, yes. So the, the investments that the city council is, is, has authorized and is making is a huge part of that. The other piece that I want to recognize is, Matt, how long ago did you put, put the book together for the PP, the PPI application? Was that two or three years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, if you go back and reminisce and, and reexamine that document, that, that binder, that was, that was enormous binder, it, it is, it is almost dumbfounding to look at the information that Matt compiled in there. And, and when you look at what got us that award and, and when you would look at how the consultant is working on the raise grant and all of the areas they're bringing up that we have to hit the mark on to be competitive in there. And you can, you can flip to the tabs and say, yes, we're, 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 we're already doing that. Yes, the city's made investments in that area. Yes, the city's doing unique things in regards to, you know, the, the, the energy corridor and linking that to the Brownsfield and the redevelopment of, of the mills and the other housing that we have been coming in there. And you look at the before values versus the aftermarket values and such under that. And then sitting on the corridors and the investments the city's made already in those areas. Sanford and Fiber falls into it as well, uh, because there's elements of scoring in there for getting outside of the box, doing things that haven't been done elsewhere. Uh, and you, and you just go tab after tab after tab and say, yep, check mark. It's, it's just incredible. It, it's a very rewarding experience to be working on this raise grant for having hit those marks. So I just want to commend, uh, Matt, especially for putting all of that information together and how he continues to compile, to put that out to the consultants, writing the grant. Uh, and just kudos to the department managers and the city council and everybody for, for pulling together. It's, it's really incredible to look at this information for what the city's been doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Thanks, Matt. Um, I'm just going to keep my fingers crossed because I think we're going to get it, so it'll be great. Um, we do have a motion and a second, right? I didn't miss something. Then I will, unless there's other discussion, I'll call the roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is a unanimous vote. Okay, uh, twenty-two dash six-nine dash zero-one, order to approve an extension to the current hydrant plowing contract for twenty-twenty-two and to twenty-twenty-five. Matt, are you going to present this?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll take this.
You'll do it, Steve? Okay.
Yes. So this, this went, I want to say, uh, property, but this went through public safety, I believe. Yes. Uh, so we've reviewed it there. Um, administration, uh, so that the current contract for hydrant clearing services, um, ends this, this June. Um, so this is the last season on that. The current vendor, uh, who was our only bidder this last round and was, uh, the experience, was, was part of the experiential, uh, delivery of services under the prior vendor that had bid the services for a number of years. Um, is proposing a three-year extension. When we asked for initial bids, he proposed a three-year extension is six thousand dollars per year more expenses. So it's thirty thousand dollars now. The proposal is for the next three-year term to be thirty-six thousand dollars per year. Um, and what administration is asking for, we recommend the grant of this extension of three years in anticipation that when we've gone out for bid for, uh, vendor services for snow plowing clearance, uh, snow plowing contracts, uh, that list has been, uh, near nonexistent. Where our current vendors have increased their, uh, work with the city, but we're not getting competitive bids uh, by other vendors because they've gotten out of this business. They can make more, uh, money and/or have other areas of, of work that they're currently busy at because of the, the current economic, uh, environment that we're in. Also as part of this, our current vendor, um, let me pull up the, the extension for you here. This is our, our current contract, uh, that we have at thirty thousand dollars per year to clear the six hundred hydrants, uh, for each, each storm. And they have, uh, an hour window, uh, an hourly window that they have to meet, uh, in order to, to clear that. Um, the extension again is at thirty-six thousand dollars as opposed to the thirty thousand dollars. Uh, there's an explanation in here as to how they calculate the per hydrant cost as well as the hourly cost with a, and, uh, with a premise to ultimately six years from now get to what is the currently, uh, hourly rate of eighty-five dollars per hour for the equipment that they utilize. Uh, again, this is JMS Construction Services, Michael Sabine being the proprietor. I will note that we have had exceptionally strong service from JMS under this contract. They clear timely, they clear extremely well, uh, as far as getting, uh, the snow removed around. They have a good, uh, up-to-date fleet of equipment that's utilized for this and they have the proper type of equipment so they can get in close proximity to the hydrants, uh, throughout the community. And again, it comes with our recommendation for the three-year extension at thirty-six thousand dollars each of the next three years. Thank you.
Um, I'm going to ask for a motion first before we have discussion by the council. And do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole to approve and a second by Counselor Martel. Questions? I see Counselor Martel's hand is up.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that there is a six-year, um, option on that. And is that something that was considered?
Currently, we're recommending the, the three-year extension and we'll want to continue to work with, with the vendor, uh, JMS Services as far as the three years beyond that.
Okay.
Any other questions by counselors? So I assume we're ready to vote. I will call the roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-two dash one-zero-nine dash zero-one, order to discuss and vote on repair or replacement of the city hall annex cooling tower. Um, I'm assuming you're going to introduce this and then Steve and then Alex will be weighing in as well. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
By way of introduction, I'll introduce Alex Hamerly, our director of facilities this evening. Uh, obviously Alex has done all of the work on this. Uh, we have had a, uh, major failure of the cooling tower. I'll let Alex describe that. Uh, we're in a better situation than we were, uh, even a week ago as far as this is concerned, because we do now have, uh, previously the, our insurance carrier was not going to cover uh, any portion of this failure, but they now are. So I'll leave it to Alex to explain, uh, what he's done for work as far as, um, getting the, the repair and or replacement of this done. Uh, we're bringing forward this, this evening without going through subcommittee because of the, 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 uh, critical timeframe on this. There's an extreme lead time to get either parts and or replacements on this that are going to get us into the cooling season, uh, potentially prior to getting this, this work completed. So Alex, I'll turn it over to you for explanation on the, the failure and what you've done, uh, since that period of time. Hope you're muted, Alex.
That better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So back on January twenty-first, we had, uh, a major leak develop in the coil uh, that runs through the cooling tower. Uh, the cooling tower is used in the HVAC system to, to exhaust heat from the building, the annex building when, uh, we're in air conditioning season. And, um, uh, uh, we have twenty water source heat pumps in the annex that, um, and that water runs through the cooling tower to exhaust the heat. Um, because this leak developed, um, we needed, we need to, we can no longer run the, the water through the loop, so we have no way to exhaust heat in the summertime. So, um, uh, to begin with, um, I had, um, uh, Mechanical Services, which is one of our primary vendors for HVAC services, come out and take a look at the tower. Um, they were not able to see anything at the time that this occurred, um, other than that there had been a leak at some location. They couldn't pinpoint where it was. Um, so we determined that we would have to do that later when the, when the temperature warmed up and we were able to put some water into the tower to pressure test it. Um, in the meantime, while they, while we were waiting for the weather to warm up a little bit, I had them, uh, do proposals for us, uh, based on two possible, um, uh, uh, methodologies. One would be replacing the, the bundle of tubes that carries this water that allows it to discharge the heat. And the other would be replacing the tower altogether. So we received two proposals from them. The first one was at fifty, fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollars and that was for the replacement of the tube bundle itself. Um, and then the second was for a hundred and six thousand, three hundred dollars and that was for the replacement of the entire tower. Um, since that time, we've been able to pressure test the tower. And there are leaks in a couple of different locations, two very minor ones and one major one. Um, in my opinion, those leaks are not repairable on the existing bundle. So at the very least, we need to replace the bundle. Um, my guess is that, my best guess is that we would get probably five to seven years out of doing a bundle replacement, um, in the existing tower. Um, if we were to replace the entire tower, we're probably looking at, uh, you know, an eighteen to twenty-year lifespan for a cooling tower is, is typical. Um, the existing tower is twelve years old. Um, it was installed back in two thousand and ten. Uh, but, um, we had, uh, a leak develop in, uh, some of the copper pipes that you see in the lower picture. Um, and, uh, there are probably hundreds of these pipes that run through the cooling tower that allow for the discharge of heat. Um, the, the leak is a couple of rows up, um, and several rows in. So it's very difficult to get to. Uh, and in my opinion, um, the leak was caused by vibration and, uh, and wear on the tubes. Um, and even if we were to find a way to repair the existing tubes, um, I think we would be likely to see repairs occur in other locations. So I don't think repairing the existing coil bundle is, is, uh, practical. Um, I think we need to look at, at the other two options. Um, my preference would be to replace the tower altogether. Uh, if we can find the funding to, to do that. And I think Steve has some ideas about how we can do that.
So we currently have a quote, uh, of a hundred and six thousand, uh, dollars from Mechanical Services. Alex has a, uh, a quote that you retained today from a, a competitive vendor with another quote, uh, coming, uh, beyond that. Since the initial, uh, yep, uh, so, uh, before you get to those new quotes, Alex, since the initial, um, inquiry into our insurance carrier that originally denied, uh, the proposal thinking that it was a freeze-up and they wouldn't cover that, uh, it's determina- was a freeze-up and they wouldn't cover that, uh, it's determination that it was not a freeze-up occurrence as to why the, the failure took place. So they now are uh, willing to, to cover the city's quote. Uh, they would, they would pay for the lesser of the two estimates, so they would, they would pay on the fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollar quote from Mechanical Services to replace the tube bundle and keep the tower in place. A city has a five thousand dollar deductible on that, so they would pay out fifty-three thousand four hundred dollars towards uh, that uh, tube, tube bundle replacement. And or we can use the same sum of money, the fifty-three thousand four hundred dollars to go towards uh, the current quote of a hundred and six thousand three hundred dollars from Mechanical Services for the complete replacement of the tower. When you look at the depreciation on a five-year replacement at the, the fifty-eight thousand four hundred versus uh, a twelve to fifteen-year replacement at a hundred and six thousand, the, the annualized depreciation is much lower on the full replacement uh, and gives us a better life cycle as far as the operations are, are considered. We looked at uh, both, both of the uh, repair and or replacement. We can put that into our capital program this year for the remaining balance. Uh, and uh, finance, our finance director, Ms. Chamberlain, has worked with Gorm Leasing. They will do either a, a two and or a three amortization on a lease purchase for the repair services on that. So Alex, you have uh, new quotes from a competitive vendor as of today?
Uh, I received one, one new quote for um, a direct replacement of the existing tower today. Um, that is uh, uh, same brand and same model. Um, and uh, their proposal was at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So I think the proposal that we've seen from Mechanical Services is a much more um, favorable deal.
Okay, and Mechanical Services is a current vendor that does work on our HVAC systems. We've had uh, an exceptionally strong track record with Mechanical Services, uh, so they would carry our recommendation uh, as far as that is concerned. So what we're seeking for from the City Council tonight is to uh, go forward either on the repair and or the replacement and the resulting fiscal impact of, of doing either one of those two under the emergency basis. I would put that into uh, the budget as it's going forward for the Budget Committee, and then carry that all the way through to the City Council process in, in April. The time-sensitive uh, matter of this is I need council approval for one or the other of those two avenues because the uh, we need to order the materials ASAP in order to get them here uh, into the start of the cooling season.
Just, just to kick in there, the, the lead time on the replacement of the bundle itself was six to eight weeks, and the lead time on a new tower was eight to twelve weeks, which easily puts us into the air conditioning season.
Before I ask other questions, other councilors for questions, Steve, I just have a question about, um, why, if we have the payment from um, insurance of, about approximately half of the cost of replacement, um, why would you do the lease purchase and borrow the rest? Why wouldn't we just take, I mean, uh, don't we have money in capital improvement that we could use and then we could just pay for it upfront?
We, we can. At the time that we were originally developing all of this, the insurance company was still a no. Uh, the, 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 their participation was, was uh, um, came fro- came forward uh, late last Thursday. So we just had that as new information. So we were originally looking at this as though there was no participation from the insurance carrier, therefore we had to capitalize either a, a fifty-eight thousand dollar um, repair or a hundred and six thousand dollar um, replacement. Then we had to look at what our capacity within the capital improvements program was. Is there the ability to spread that over two to three years as opposed to taking it all in the singular year so that the op- the lease auctions were explored uh, with Gorm?
But that is not what you're suggesting this evening. If we, as a council, decide upon replacement, then you will use the, the insurance money to defray the costs in this year and use the rest and take it out of capital improvement? I, I mean, of the C I P, or you're going to um, still recommend that it be-
Yep, the, the five thousand dollars we would take out of current uh, C I P uh, for the um, excuse me, for the uh, insurance match, then you could utilize the insurance match money and have that core replaced. Uh, if you want to replace the tower-
Right.
-then I'm gonna have to capitalize approximately fifty thousand dollars in there uh, as, as far as the C I P is concerned.
I just wanted to understand what it, what, what the difference is. Okay, I get it. Uh, Councilor Martel, your hand was up first, and then Councilor Stackpole.
Um, just a couple of questions, and I don't know if you have the answer, but um, has the design issue with the, that caused this to begin with, would that be mitigated whether the replacement or with the coil, replacement coils?
You know, I think the uh, failure happened as a result of this particular manufacturer's design. Um, every manufacturer that manufactures cooling towers has their own um, design, and I can't tell you whether one is any better than the other. Um, but I can tell you that I trust Mechanical Services not to recommend a tower to us that isn't reliable and um, a good purchase for us.
So you think they would probably give us something different?
Um, the, the tower that was recommended by Mechanical Services is an Evapco tower. Um, it's a different manufacturer. Um, it has the, you know, the same cooling capacity um, as the existing tower, but it's a different manufacturer with a different design and, and different characteristics.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my thinking on this is that we're at about half-life, and at that point, probably might as well just go ahead and get something new. Thank you.
Councilor Stackpole, you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, um, so the timing's never good, but uh, my preference would be uh, pers- personally, my preference would be uh, to replace the whole tower, which of course will include some, some financing. Uh, budget is just, Budget Committee is just starting. I realize this is not a huge significantly uh, piece of, would not be a piece of next year's budget and apparently possibly a couple of years' budget to finance the balance we would need for a full replacement. Uh, but I'd still like to be able to take a look at it, but I hate to be put in a position as a Budget Committee member that this has to go, you know, this has to stay, I should say, rather than go, as opposed to something else because we've already committed to doing this project, let's say, uh, at, at the council level and have to weigh the uh, twenty, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand for this against something else in the budget process. I, I would really like it to be, and that's, part of that's timing, but I'd really like it, if it's possible, to have it be cleaner than that, uh, than, than uh, kind of putting this whole situation, throw it into the, you know, you're gonna throw it into the budget process and who knows what's gonna come out, you know, just like the sausage.
Councilor Hanselman, your hand is up.
Yes, I would just say that I, I really have to defer to our Director of Facilities and City Manager Buck on this one. It sounds to me like it's an emergency-type situation. We have a short timeframe in which to order it, and we're just gonna have to trust, we're gonna handle it on the budget process and adequately, however that shakes out. That's just my two cents on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hanselman, and I just have to say that I agree exactly with what you just said, that um, I'm not gonna, I won't vote to um, repair. I will vote to replace and leave it to you to figure out the most economical way to do that and fit it into the budget process because I wouldn't want to be in this building in the summer without air conditioning. Sorry, but it would be deadly. So, um-
If, if I could please, on, on the repair versus the replacement, if you look at the repair, uh, at fifty-eight thousand four hundred, set, set the insurance aside for, for, for a moment. Uh, that's, and, and it's, and it's projected to get us by for the next five years, and then you're gonna be looking at replacing the entire tower because of the age uh, uh, and wear and tear on the remaining components. It will be well beyond its useful life at that point in time. So that's depreciation of eleven thousand six hundred and eighty dollars per year on the repair. Bring the insurance into it, you can, you can all but zero that out within five thousand dollars, uh, and there's that. For the hundred and six thousand three hundred dollars and the fifteen-year lifespan on that, that's eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year depreciation, right, for, if we, we pay a hundred percent of that. You bring the fifty-three thousand four hundred dollars of insurance money into there, we're down to a net cost of fifty-two thousand nine hundred dollars for Mechanical Services to do that full replacement. You're down to three thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars per year depreciation. I have the capacity to go forward and recommend to the Budget Committee uh, to, to incorporate the full fifty-two thousand nine hundred dollars uh, into the C I P this year. Take that in a one-year piece because the demands for the C I P are never known in, in, in future years, uh, you know, uh, outside of the, the five-year planning that we do. Um, or you could capitalize that fifty-two thousand nine hundred dollar differential with Gorm Sandin leasing, uh, with Gorm leasing uh, on a two or even a three-year depreciation schedule. So, um, there, there's all of those options. As the manager, I would recommend replacement of the tower. I know it's a longer period of time to wait for that, uh, but we may be able to expedite that process and or if we obtain uh, the quote that we're waiting for from the competitor for another cooling tower, it may be a lower price option than that, and we could look at the, the timeframe as well. So I guess what I'm asking the City Council to authorize tonight is, do you want to do a repair, or you, or do you want to do a replacement? Once you make that decision, the Director and myself will move forward with that and incorporate that into the budget process, what, if anything, is necessary.
Thank you, Steve. Um, Councilor Stackpole?
Uh, just, just a, just a quick follow-up on, on what you just said, Steve. So what you're saying is that there, there is an option, there is an option to pay that fifty-two-nine out of the current budget, let's just say, whatever department that may be, or program.
I, I, I would have the, I have the quote capacity to put that into this year's budget process, right, for the fiscal, for the twenty-two, twenty-three. Because the timing on this, we wouldn't be paying for this until the fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three uh, budget. So I'd put that in, into the capitalization at that point in time because from the budget that was presented to you as City Councilors, um, this is how, and this is how rapidly the budget moves. I've had a significant, I've had a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar reduction in the, in the uh, debt service piece that I'm gonna carry forward as a proposed adjustment to the uh, Budget Committee in that first night presentation. Uh, we've also had a significant upscale, I, I, you know, I indicated to you that the revenue sharing number was low. Uh, it was grossly underestimated because we were waiting for the new numbers. I have the new numbers from the budget, the State Budget Committee Forecasting Committee's updates from December first of twenty-twenty-one, and when I incorporate those numbers in, there's over a five hundred thousand dollar positive uh, new revenue to the city that I didn't have in the budget that, that I presented to the council. So I have all of those in there, and I saw, it's such a moving target. I saw new numbers yet again today uh, from the Budget Forecasting Committee that there's another four hundred and eleven million dollars that they hadn't accounted for uh, for the next biennium. So I'm waiting to see what those numbers come out when they do their actual budget forecasting numbers that I will see for revenue sharing somewhere around March fifteenth of this month. So there's a lot of moving parts there, but it's all to the positive. So the fiscal capacity to do this uh, and come out um, equal to or better than the starting point that I had before the council uh, two weeks ago is, is absolutely there.
Okay, so I, I mean, I've, I've expressed my concerns. Um, uh, my, let's do, and I'm speaking more as a Budget Committee member at this point even than a City Council member. I mean, my, my preference would be if the revenues are there in next year's budget, to just do it in a one lump sum, and that's, that's gonna be a discussion that we're gonna have at the Budget Committee level. I'm, I'm just gonna say one more time, my concern that this becomes a, a, any kind of a, a political uh, thing where we have to pit this against some other uh, program in the budget, I, I have some concerns about that. But I think if we can, we can find the money for it uh, in revenues for next year, but uh, and, and the other thing is, I just don't want to put this, put this thing in jeopardy to say, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and completely, which I believe is the appropriate thing to do, and I'm gonna vote for that. Um, uh, so uh, you know, uh, against, okay, now we've, now we've got to back up and just do the tube replacement, which it's probably, you're gonna get too far down the road to back up and say, we can only now finance the tube replacement. It's just, I don't know, I just think there's-
So can I just say that I don't think that's gonna happen? I think that, I trust the City Manager to figure out how he's gonna pay for it and that we've got the capacity to do that. So I'm gonna look for a motion to um, uh, vote to replace the City Hall Annex Cooling Tower. Is there a motion to do that?
I'll, I'll make, I'll make that motion, and, yeah, I'll just make a comment after someone seconds it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hurley. Make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Martel. Discussion, Councilor, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
All I wanna say is everybody needs to remember that the capital improvement program, we, we adjust it continuously throughout the year based on needs, et cetera. So the, the Budget Committee actually doesn't vote for some increase in, you know, capital improvements or things need to be adjusted. There, there is flexibility to adjust for capital improvement, things that crop up during the year that are unexpected, and this is kind of the same situation. So I think we need to replace it. I think it would be foolish to just fix that tower for a five-year, you know, you're paying fifty percent of the cost for five years. It doesn't make any sense. So there you go, so.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion before we vote? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Councilor Martel?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Order that baby right now because otherwise you're gonna be very hot.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, oh my gosh, we're done. Councilmember comments? Councilor Martel?
Uh, nothing for tonight, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Hanselman?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to share, um, well, one, yeah, there's so many positive, amazing things happening in our community, and sometimes I think we all get bogged down and forget about them. So I'm gonna try to make a point of mentioning just some of the organizations that are meeting or things going on um, to, to highlight what's happening in Sanford that's awesome. So uh, if folks aren't following the Sanford School Legacy Foundation, they really do a great job of communicating things about alumni, teachers, um, things, opportunities to support our school. Um, so I highly recommend following them on Facebook, checking out their website. Um, there's a Sanford Arts Alliance which is kicking off thanks to Brett Williams and Emily Sheffield that I'm super excited about. It's meeting on March eleventh at ten AM. If anyone wants more info, let me know. And then of course, Friends of Downtown is meeting every two weeks. If anybody's interested, also let me know. I'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilor Hanselman. Uh, Councilor Stackpole?
All set, thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Um, just a comment. I was looking for photos for the Raze Grant today for uh, Matt. I don't know if anybody else did that too, and I, it's like a walk down memory lane because I was a kid, a lot of harvest days, holidays, just wow. I mean, all the stuff we were doing back then, I think the economy kind of like knocked us in the head for a little bit, but it's nice to see like energy returning, and it'll be different than what it was, but I, I think there'll be a lot of good things happening in our downtown and especially around the pond as we see all these improvements occur. So it was fun. I had some, I had some good ones. I hope Ma- Matt finds them because I had a great one of the crowds sitting on the new wall, like the year after that wall was built along Number One Pond. It was a great crowd photo, and I thought, I think it would make a good case for the Raze Grant.
He's got a thumbs up, so I think that means he has it.
Yeah, good.
Um, I don't have any other comments. Uh, future agenda items, Councilor Martel?
Uh, nothing for tonight, thank you.
Councilor Hanselman?
I just wanted to share with everybody that I had sent a request to Larissa to have an update on the comprehensive plan at the council level because we haven't had one recently, so just so everybody knows that I put that request out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Stackpole?
Uh, nothing this evening, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Well, thank you.
I have nothing. So we are finished for the evening. Thank you all, and I will declare us adjourned. See you in-
See you Thursday.
Oh, wait, all right, Thursday, Budget Committee. Thank you, bye.
Have a great night.
Thanks.